Well, welcome. I've said it before, I'll say it again. Tonight, we meet a special person in Milford. Not somebody with an opinion that wants somebody else to do all the hard work. Somebody who's got an idea of how to do better for our kids. And is use the old adage, put me in, coach, I can make a difference. It's very special when people are willing to work for what they believe. And in my mind, I've said it before, I'll say it again. School committee is one of the most important decisions you make, whether you have children or not. Because if you have children, well, by the time you get to high school, you're fighting to get an hour or two a night with them. Whereas the school committee dictates what they do for six to eight hours a day. And frames them up for their future. So, please, get to know the candidates, whether you go to Citizens Forum, whether you read the papers, whether you listen to a show like this. Get to know what these people who will dictate how your children, and if you don't have children, the value of your property. Cause as the school systems go up or down in quality, so don't the values that people assign to your homes. So let's start and meet with a candidate.
Thanks for that rousing intro, Al. I'm happy to be here. Thanks for inviting me on to show my views. My name's Greg Allegrazza. I'm running for school committee. I'm a native Milfordian. I grew up in town. I went to kindergarten through high school in town. My educational experience in Milford was second to none. I loved, I can almost remember all of my teachers growing up. And they got me to where I am today.
What schools did you go to?
I went to, so my kindergarten was actually a church across from Morans. It was in the basement of the church and I had Ms. Eck. And then from there, first and second grade was at Memorial. My principal, Mr. Bebo, my favorite teacher of all time was Ms. Catella, who became Freni Pizzotti. So Mr. Pizzotti, my fourth grade teacher, married my first grade teacher, who was my favorite teacher. And then second grade, I was there. Third, fourth, and fifth were the first year that the Old Woodland School opened. So I was up there and they had the open floor plan, so they had like the four or five classes. My fifth grade, I'll never forget with Mr. DeVito and Mrs. Gilmore and Ms. Grimes, Ms. Bradford, it was just, it was fabulous. And we had Mr. Shaughnessy as our, as our principal. And then back then, sixth, seventh, and eighth, we had, so they moved. Middle East was open at the time, so that was, we had the clusters, red, white, and blue. And the red clusters were down at, at Middle East. So sixth grade, I was up in where Stacy is now, seventh grade down at Middle East. And then eighth grade back, and then I went to Milford High School for all four years.
The old Milford High or the new one?
No.
Now, the new one's the old one.
The new old one, yeah, the new old one. Yeah, I was, played three sports throughout my, my life growing up. I played basketball. I actually played all sports I could. I was a big fan of sports. I played basketball, baseball, and soccer, growing up. I went to WPI after, which you're familiar with.
Absolutely.
Holy Cross grad yourself. Yeah, I came out with a mechanical engineering degree, so I know with the new high school going through its paces now, I think that will come in handy. I've been working in the bio-pharmaceutical industry now for twenty, twenty-four years as a contractor. And before that, I, I worked about eight years with varying things from in the diagnostics industry and my last job there was a manufacturing engineer. So I work on all the equipment, all of the utilities, and I've been doing basically the automation systems that run all the equipment for the system. So I'm very familiar with troubleshooting and working in conjunction with, you know, teamwork.
WPI is a hidden gem. It's amazing, you know, when you think of engineering and all, you think of MIT and other schools. But the quality and the scope of what they teach at WPI, as far as engineering, amazes me.
It's, it's actually improved a lot over the last few years too, because it was, um, they instituted a real big biotech process center there where they built across the street and a couple of the older buildings that were basically gonna be not, not really torn down, but they weren't used for anything. So WPI took them over. They revamped the quad area, they redid like the gym, they put the pool on the second floor of the gym. There, I took my, my oldest daughter there. I'm currently married with the youngest daughter. One of the main reasons why I'm running for school committee is she's going into the sixth grade. And over the last few years, I've seen and I'm concerned about, you know, this, the safety aspect and I feel that the, the schools are sort of dipping their toes in areas that were previously left to the, the parents. You know, I, I feel that there's a certain set of values, like my, my family instilled, my, my parents instilled values in me is, is in beliefs in, as their parents did in him, in, in both of them. So my little history of my, my family, they've been in town for a hundred years. And my paternal grandparents, Evelyn was, used to be Abundanza Allegrazza and Tony Allegrazza, were very involved in the, in the town coming up. My grandmother was on the school committee. She was a member of the Rotary Club and, you know, very active with charitable organizations, of course, at Sacred Heart Church. My, and my grandfather was a former selectman and then a town moderator in town. And their son, Tony, was the chairman, my uncle Lee, of the school committee. My uncle Nello, who you're familiar with, was a former teacher and head of the math and physics department forever. This, my whole family's been involved community-wise, whether it's, you know, governmental like them or just community, like my cousin Amy is very, very active at Sacred Heart still. If anyone's gone through the religious education down there over the last, I don't even know, twenty-five years, you know, they've come in contact with Amy. She's just a, just a wonderful human. And I, I think they might put a, put a statue up there for her eventually, you know? And in the meantime, she's raised four kids too, so I have a lot of admiration for her. And my father was a long time coach in town and umpire it and I umpire it, so it's sort of a legacy to, to follow. But the real reason is that I, two of the main things that I, I care about.
Let's start with.
Yeah.
Question number one.
Yep.
I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
So I think the main reason is a set of new ideas and I really care about the quality of education. So to me, education is basically the, the most important part, the, the, the foundation of a, of a successful person is, is a good education. And like I previously stated, my education in Milford was, was fantastic. I didn't have to worry about, you know, when the, when, my parents never thought about when they would go to school. Anything, you know, related to really my safety or that the, the school would be delving into areas that maybe were traditionally, you know, them. They would, didn't think that, that, that I'd be going to school and, and I think now we put a little too much on our teachers. I think our teachers, rather than concentrating on what they were trained to do, like their curriculum, you're a science teacher, you teach science. I think they're sort of delving into areas, more counseling and mental health issues where for me personally, I think are better left for the parents. You know, fully, fully knowing that not every, you know, kid has two parents at home and they could have issues and, and things like that, but to me, school should be, you know, a, 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 a safe space for, for kids. Just to go in and learn. And I wanna look at the school, whether it's a policy or a procedure or a line item in the budget and put the question to it, you know, put a magnifying lens on it, saying, how does this improve the quality of the education in town? And knowing full well that I'm only one of seven. Um, being an engineer, I like to delve into, you know, the meter thing. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read and do my research and figure out, say, okay, I had questions. I, I, I didn't plan on running for school committee. I've been thinking about the last two or three years. So this wasn't just like a, a, off, off the cuff decision for me. And it's, um, I wish I didn't have to run, let's put it that way.
But you've been involved with, we served on the police chief selection committee.
Yes.
So you're already involved in helping the town in different areas.
Yeah, I, I was, I was gonna bring that up because the school committee is a collaborative effort. So as a school committee member, we don't have direct supervisory or operational control over, over teachers or over the administrators or, you know, over the curriculum, but as a collective, we do have an effect on the policies and the procedures. And so my first experience, two things that are very important to me are education and safety. So when the opportunity came up to volunteer for the police chief's committee to serve, I didn't, I didn't know how it was gonna go, right? I didn't, I didn't hear a lot of real good things about the, the, the last one. I heard it was very political and you know, my whole concern with, with being on the committee was to get the, express my views and get the best police chief for the town that would serve the town and keep the, keep the town people safe. And serving on that committee, I said it multiple times, in that it was such a, a great experience. It was such a diverse view of, you know, overlook of the people in town. We had a selectman, two town members, you, a former policeman, and we were all willing to collaborate and here, not everybody like agreed or had the same political views, but the, the point wasn't your, your politics or whatever. It was everybody was on the same team looking to get the best chief.
Biggest thing I felt was everybody respected the other members of the committee.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, we may not agree, but we agreed that we each have our right to have an opinion.
Exactly, and I think a lot of times now, that's, uh, that's an issue. And I think that the, you know, a lot of the big buzzwords now, diversity is a, is a big buzzword, right? Well, I think what gets lost in the, in the, in the shuffle is the most important diversity to me is diversity of thought. You know, so everybody has, not everybody has the same beliefs I do. I don't expect them to. I'm not gonna convince them to try to have the same beliefs I do, but I want people to respect those beliefs. So I don't feel that if I instill a certain belief system or a value system into my, into my daughter in going into school, that I don't think that the school should be trying to usurp that. You know, they shouldn't be trying to teach them something that really I don't, I don't believe. That's, that's, that's not their place. It's my place to teach those value systems. And there were questions that have come up over the, you know, last few years. And I just, rather than sit on the sidelines and write an email or go to meetings where maybe you can't have the impact, I wanted to run this year and say, you know what? I wanna be the voice for those parents and those people like me that had these questions but aren't running, and I wanna be accountable to them to say, ask me those questions. You know, I, I wanna be the person that you come to to say, hey, I don't, I don't agree with that. Can we bring this up? You know, and then try to form a consensus on the committee or a coalition, cause it's seven people, so you know, you bring up your facts and if it goes, it goes, but people that know me know I'm honest and passionate about, you know, my positions. And I'll, I'll fight for those positions. You know, I'm, I'm firm in my, in my beliefs, you know, but I'm not intractable. So it's, if you can convince me that something is, will work out better and there's a good reason for it, then by all means, I'd be willing to change my mind. I have, I have no, I have no problem with that. I'm a pretty open-minded person.
Well, you're right in that the world then revolves around the number four.
Yeah.
To get anything passed through the school committee, you gotta have four people all going in the same direction.
Correct, correct. And I think if you're seeing the school committee and everything's seven oh all the time, then to me, I would think that, and I know it isn't seven oh all the time, I'm not saying it is. But that would sort of bring up a question to me. So that brings the diversity of thought into, into, into question. Do we have that really on the school committee? You know, and if there's a, one, one block all the time that's are always doing it and shutting out the other people, I don't think that, that's, that's healthy either, so. Whether you agree or disagree, I think a fresh set of eyes going in to the school committee is, is always in someone that cares about the education in town is always, it's not a bad thing.
You're getting into a new area. What do you think the three biggest challenges you'll face on the school committee will be?
Well, I know the three, the three issues are, it's, everything comes back to money in the end, right? So it's, it's always gonna come back to money. How much money do you have to spend on the things that you really wanna do? So if we're talking policies and procedures, or we're talking, um, the new school, so we've gotta say money, we're gonna say the new school, and I think the challenges that have been sort of forced upon us by forces out of our control at the state level and at the national level when it comes to the influx of non-English speakers coming into the school. And I've heard from a lot of parents that, you know, there's, there's a lot of frustration because the, you know, as they come in, we're obligated to, to teach the kids, right? They have to be, they're in town, now they have to be educated. The question is, how, how do you go about that? And I know we'll probably get into that, but those, those, those are the three, three biggest things I see. The budget, the reduction in the state aid. I know we lost about eight million dollars in the state aid. It was supposed to go up eight, no, we lost like six million, right? So it was supposed to go up to eight million and we only got like two million. So now the, the burden on the, on the townspeople is, is more. We have to come up with that much more money to do that. And I know the school committee had a lot of initiatives, they're gonna hire new teachers and things like that. And a lot of them got cut because of this loss of state aid. So it's, so it's important. It's sort of a blow too. I guess it came out of nowhere. They weren't really aware that was gonna happen, you know, so there's certain things they can't cut, cause I know we have the illustrative math that, you know, my, my daughter's fifth grade teacher was talking about, he's the, the, the math teacher there that he really, really enjoys. He thinks it's a great program. And they've rolled it into the, the middle school and now this got to roll into the high school. So that's a cost that you, you really can't stop that, you know? That, that's part of the curriculum. That's what I like to see, you know, in improving the curriculum to help these kids learn math, cause you know, the STEM, for me, it's all about the math and the science, you know, it's, 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 it's very important. I always tell my daughters like the world runs on math. Everything you say runs on math, so.
Well, the economy obviously runs on biotech in Massachusetts.
Yeah, it does.
But you're right, this year, it's the first year in God. I think about two thousand and three, when we faced the budget challenges.
Yeah.
We were expecting, the last two years, we've gotten an incremental seven, six and seven million dollars from the state.
Yes, yeah.
And we were expecting it again this year.
Yep.
And all of a sudden, you know, we heard the governor's not touching chapter seventy, which is the school money that the state pays, not touching local contribution. And then they ran into that little eight hundred million dollar deficit.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, the school department had to deal with four percent, not fifteen percent.
Yeah, yeah, that's a huge blow. That's a huge blow and we're not a, you know, huge town, but I think I, I think it, it might've been you that said like, isn't forty percent of the budget in town the, the school budget?
Sixty-two percent. Forty percent is what's left for everything else.
Sixty-two percent is the school budget?
Yep.
So that just goes to show you, like you said, that the, the school and the quality of, of the schools in town, as you said earlier, really affects, people moving into towns, what's the first thing they ask if they have kids?
How's your school?
How good your schools, right? And that was never a que, in, in question, you know, back, back in the day. And I didn't have, I didn't have that question when my, my, my two older kids from my, from my first marriage, they're now in South Carolina, they're, they're in their twenties now. And they'd gone to school in Menden and then they went to BBT. And I never had, you know, a, a question about that. I, the only questions I, I had for them, and I had told them, just like, you know, my parents, me growing up when it comes to respecting your, your teachers, like the, you're in school to learn. So if I hear from your teachers, I used to tell them, if I get an email from your teachers, there's, there's gonna be trouble. I'm taking their side and I'm not taking your side.
Well, that was the scariest thing. I mean, not that we didn't live a perfect life and never made a mistake.
Oh, yeah.
But when you were in front of a principal or a teacher, you know, I remember, do what you want with me. Exile me to Siberia, you know, do anything you want.
Parents.
Don't call my father and mother, please.
Yeah.
I don't know how, my father, God bless him, never raised a hand to me, but I don't know how he would've reacted if I embarrassed the family.
Yeah, I, I remember the, when I was in second grade, I was showing off for one of them, I'll never forget this, showing off for one of the the, the girls in my class, just a little, little smart guy, I was throwing rocks. And right behind where Memorial is, there's a daycare center. And I hit a kid with a rock, a little rock. And the, the, the guy who ran the daycare, I saw him walking towards me, like a, he was in second grade, so it was like eight years old or something. He grabs my hand, he brings me into Mr. Bebo's office. I was petrified, petrified, you know, and that's and that's, that's, you know, you don't need to be, you know, scared, but that's, that all goes to the fact that you're in school to learn. You know, the, the teachers aren't there to babysit you. You know, they're, they're not your babysitter and, and the parents, my parents, your parents, my grandparents all expected, you know, a certain, they have a certain expectation of how you're gonna behave, right? So I think that's part of what can be taught, cause I'm not sure if, you know, this generation coming in, they're coming from rural areas and whatever their traditions are, how important they know. I, I think it would be good to maybe have some sort of class or something on, for parents to saying, here's the expectations on what we expect of your kids, because discipline is also, to me, is, is, is a big thing, is a big issue. And I think we need to support our teachers when it comes to discipline, so. I think what happens a lot nowadays is, you know, with all the things we were talking about, is that people are focused on maybe the individual over the collective inside the classroom. And to me, the teacher's sole job should be focused on the entire classroom. So if there's, if there's a problem child, in, in, constant disruptions from one kid, we have to be able to, to do something about them, not come in and, and sort of discuss, oh, why, you know, did you maybe, did, did you have a bad day this morning or something like that? Remove the problem from the class for the time being, deal with it. But the focus has to go back on, because what that does, now it takes away from the rest of the students. So now you're, you're putting the focus on one kid, it's tyranny of the, of the minority, right? So you're focusing on one kid over the, the good of the, in the entire class. And it just, everything just goes, goes downhill from there. So I think we need to support our teachers when it comes to things like that as well.
When we look at the budget, just to round that out, this year we got four percent increase. It's obvious we don't believe the schools can live with four percent. We brought up that we could squeeze all the different areas and get to six percent. And obviously, the school department initially started off at fifteen percent. And they've told us that they can get down to six and a half.
Yeah.
How would you approach the budget? How do you get to a six and a half?
From the four that we have?
From where we are.
So you're talking about taking from other areas of a town, right?
Or from the other areas of the school. How would you approach it? You're given a, a plan that says you're gonna get sixty odd million dollars. That's what you got.
Yeah.
Now, how do you start? Yeah.
Well, I think any, without cutting anything?
Well, that's, that's an option.
So I, I, I think you would need to prioritize, right? You need to prioritize what you, what you really, what you really want, what you're looking for, alright? So what's, what's your priority? Is it reducing class size? Is it, is it, um, focusing on alternative, um, classes for, uh, the high school maybe for like, say, voca, adding more vocational classes for, uh, for kids that might not be going to college or something like that. And then it's just finding spots to, to cut is very difficult, especially when it comes to the, to the school system. And without being well-versed in the entire budget and all the line items. I mean, if I had all the line items in front of me, I could probably do it, but I, I wanna discuss it obviously with the other members of the, the school committee and then talk with each individual administrator in their schools and say, what do you really need and what can you do without? You know, I wouldn't wanna cut things like, you know, there's, there's certain things I wouldn't wanna cut, like whether music or art. Because a lot of times, those are like the first things or, or even STEM, like STEM is just, is so important now. And it, it, it's, it's so hard to say, I, I wanna, what to cut. But those, those music and art classes sort of get put aside. I was a member of the band. I marched in the band when I was a kid growing up and I played it all the way in through high school. I played the trumpet. And music is a, is a big part of my life even still now. I mean, I, I love music. You know, so, and my daughter's playing the cello now, so I hope she stays with it. You know, she's only in fifth grade and not doing anything crazy with it, you know, she's not yo-yo ma, but she, uh, I, I love to listen to her go to, go to the classes, so I would hate to see anything like that get cut, so. It's just a tough question to answer.
You mentioned the high school. Thoughts on Milford High?
Um, like everybody else, I think Milford High being fifty years old, did it open in seventy-four or seventy-two?
Seventy-three. This second half of the year.
Okay.
Because we graduated in May of seventy-four.
Yeah.
Was the first class.
Yeah.
Cause I was part of it, so we went there.
First graduating class?
First graduating class. Seventy-five was the first full year.
Okay.
We only got half a year at the new high school.
Yeah, so at the time, it was, you know, it was great. And my understanding is that it's on a five-acre footprint, which is a lot of land. And we obviously need to upgrade, you know, it, it, it needs an upgrade whether you are able to do, and I know we're in the final stages of, of, um, looking at it. And there's gonna be a feasibility study to figure out what's the best course of action. Now, I think we look, need to look at it also as the best course of action for the people of the town, right? So obviously, I could say, yeah, I'd love a new high school. We're talking two hundred eighty to five hundred million, but by the time it's done, maybe, right?
Well, Tri-County was two eighty-eight for a new high school.
Yeah.
Haverhill, the BBT of that area, was four fifty-five.
That's what I mean, so that's, so that's, where's that money come from? You know, and you don't wanna say, okay, I mean, people's taxes go up every year. You don't wanna be looking at like, you know, an override or something like that. So now, I think what we have to do is rely on, this is where maybe my engineering expertise or experience, not really expertise, I'm not an expert. I'm not a structural engineer, I'm not an architect. You know, I won't be, you know, advising. I know we're gonna have two members of the school committee potentially be on like the, the board. There's gonna be a, a board committee for, for the, for the new high school. And once the feasibility study's done, they'll say what the best course of action is. And what the most cost-effective course of action is. For me, I think you could probably, if, if the core of the school is good, right? So doesn't have to be like, you know, what it looks like, the floors and things like that. If, if the core of the school is good, there's not asbestos, there's not anything that can be, you can piecemeal, start taking things out, replace flooring, maybe put in a soundproof area, upgrade the technology spots of each part. So we already have, you can separate them in, into wings and say, hey, you know what? I wanna add a few more shops, cause I wanna introduce kids to, uh, to not even just carpentry or electronics or, you know, engineering or whatever the case may be, broadcasting or journalism. You know, you can expose them to other things like that and you can go as, as going, but it has to be a, a plan on how to do it. So depending on what's the most cost-effective way and if it's gonna last, we don't wanna do it. I don't wanna say anything bad, but you know, half, you know what, either. So if you, if you're gonna improve the school, you know, renovate it, then make sure you do it the right way and be forward-looking enough that it's gonna be able to last another thirty years.
Well, you know, the key becomes, we've got five major schools in Milford.
Yep.
If you look at an average school lasts forty to fifty years.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right. You can't do it halfway.
No.
Because twenty-five years from now or thirty years from now, we're gonna be in the middle of renovating another school.
Yes.
You know, if you figure every eight to ten years, soon as the high school's done, we go to Stacy. Then to Memorial, and you got lucky, you got to go to Memorial as a kid.
Yeah.
I, you know, there was lots of us who envied the kids who, Memorial had lockers.
Yes. Yeah, it's like that for everyone, right? So like they had all of a street school. I know my father went to all of the streets.
I went there four years.
Yeah, yeah, and then, uh, you know, Milford Catholic too. A lot of people went to Milford Catholic and it's, uh, so in, in Memorial is now, you look at Memorial and it's, it's updated. You know, there's issues, there's facilities issues. I, I heard from people that there's things, so those are the type of budget things, say, okay, where you look, say, what are we spending on? Could we spend it on a new, you know, janitorial service or another new janitor or something like that to help keep the things clean? Cause I know, um, Or something like that to help keep the things clean, cause I know um, the story came up about the new tables in the in the high school. And it it makes a difference when you improve small things, you know, we're gonna improve a lot of things with the with with the new.
For a little bit of money, you can have a big impact.
Yeah, because I think people respect, so when they come in, they see, so it's not dirty, you know, it's not broken. You know, there's not legs missing off of things and tables or gums stuck underneath, and they see this all those thing. The the mindset sort of changes, say, oh, this is nice, and they wanna keep it nice, because it helps them learn as well.
Any comments on the question about should we build a field house?
Field house?
One of the questions that's come up is when the new, the new high school, when the old high school. The present high school was built. There was a big debate in seventy-three over should we have a pool? And that now, I don't think anybody questions how wonderful it is to have that pool at Milford High.
It's fantastic.
Now the question comes up, we're not gonna get another bite at the high school apple for forty years after this. Should we build a field house?
For athletics? You mean like an indoor track type of? I I don't know.
And I know you can't, I'm putting you on the spot, cause you can't answer it without data. But just gut feel.
My my gut feel, we just redid the track and the uh, football field with. Excellent, to me, I I'm an outdoor guy, right, so you know, having a roof over everything isn't always the the greatest idea. And the fact that we just redid the track and and the football field. My thinking, education wise, I would prefer the money go into technological upgrades. Inside the school and not necessarily use that money for like a field house. Maybe we use some of the money that could go to a field house to improve the backfields. Where we used to practice when we were JVs, the JVs would practice on the backfields behind the uh, behind the high school. Rather than at Fino or, you know, we'd do town parks, like, you know, when we were doing baseball, beginning of the season, we'd run the town park and practice there.
Would you add anything to the high school as far as areas or programs?
Like I said before, I would I would like to see more um, vocational programs and. I'm not sure, but I think they do have like a financial um, literacy program going out of the high school, do you know that for a fact?
I don't.
So that would be something, because I think. Going with the whole idea of preparing our kids to be, you know, productive members of society. Teaching them how to open a bank account or be uh, responsible with a credit card, or how to write a check, keep your checkbook. You know, do a uh, do a balance, do do a budget. That's all like super important, like stuff on how to live, or you can even look at it and say, hey, maybe we could. Do like a Realtor type of thing, teach them on what a what a loan is like, like loan to value issues and. There there's so many things that they could potentially open the kids' minds up to say, hey, this is, this is an another opportunity. Other than spending three hundred thousand dollars on a college, who knows how much it's gonna be in the next five or ten years, can it keep going up? I keep saying no, but it keeps going up every year.
Well, but when I was at Holy Cross, I was amazed, it was sixty-two hundred dollars all in. Room, board, tuition, everything. I said, how can, my mother was working at Draper's making eleven grand a year. My father made the big bucks, he was making eighteen thousand at.
Was the personnel manager.
And you sit there and say, it can't keep going up, yet this year, it's sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's that that's, it's it's unbelievable, my my parents bought bought a house in seventy-two and on Highland Street. For uh, thirty-two thousand dollars, right, the whole house. So W P I, when I went there, when I came out of W P I, I had nine thousand dollars in loans, I think. And I had it paid off by the time I was twenty-eight years old, my niece just went there last year and it was seventy-three thousand dollars a year.
Amazing, now, when we take a look at the kids, are they getting a good education in Milford?
I think if you look at um. The quality of the colleges that the that the uh, the the highest achievers are getting into. Yeah, and I I think it would be, you know, remiss to say, it would be against also against the. You know, the quality of the teachers in town, that you can absolutely get a good education in Milford, is it getting tougher? Um, because of circumstances out of our control and then and like I said before, in in influx? Yes, and that was one of the um, the issues that I've heard from a lot of people, is a disparity on. What is happening in 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 the classrooms, so with a large influx of. English is second second language, so Eng- English learner students. Our traditional students are sort of not, well, they are, they're like falling behind, right? So a lot of emphasis is going into classes, now there's two, three or four interpreters in a class and a teacher's. Trying to teach a class and the pace of that class is now slowed down, so the people in that in that class. That would generally be doing really well, I've heard from multiple people. That they're starting to either fall behind because. The flow of the class is broken, right, so it's it's just, then then the attention's gone, as as a kid, your attention span is. You know, it's like, oh, there's a squirrel, you know, it's like, get out of the way, so. I think this is where we come thinking out out outside the box, I don't know what the policies are, um, but. For me, there should be a limit on how many English learners there should be in each class. Where it could it could be more manageable for the teachers and the students. Where they can keep that more of that flow going, and then then we come into budget a- as well. Do we have enough to to have, you know, high quality interpreters? Or my 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 two older kids, Menthen had a Spanish immersion program, which was phenomenal. So my my son and daughter both now are fluent in Spanish, so they didn't hear any English from like kindergarten. Basically to like fourth grade, then they started mixing it in a little bit, so it was the same curriculum, it's all the English learners, it was on a lottery system. And they learned Spanish, so I don't see why we couldn't sort of immerse these kids in English. One of the uh, so now, you know, we have the the Italian uh, exchange students in town. One of one of my friends is an Italian's exchange student, he's been in in the States since the beginning of the year. He speaks better English than me sometimes, and he's learned it since he's been here, just since he's been here in a year. So it is possible for them to learn English, and that would help them immensely with everything else, so. I think that might be something that would be great to look at, you know, is it feasible, I I don't know.
Well, we've had, when you were in school, when I was in school, we were adding one child per year to the school system. Cause in seventy-four, first class out, my class size was two hundred twenty. Forty-five years later, we were two sixty.
Yeah, I think we had like two seventy-four or something.
But the last couple of years, not this year, luckily, the last two years, we added two hundred kids per year.
Yeah, see, that's.
I mean, that's, Memorial holds three hundred. So you're adding almost three quarters of a class each year.
Yeah, and that that goes to the ability of the of the teacher as well to try to control, you know, that many students and. I mean, the 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 max size for effectiveness is really what, twenty-four to twenty-five students or so for class? So now you're stressing in anyways, you're pushing the the edges and you're also pushing the 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 facilities. Themselves, I mean, we just had to put permanent pods up at Brookside, and Brookside's not not that old, how old is Brookside? You know, something like that, so like you said, eventually you're gonna, ten fifteen years, you can look at.
Oh, it's amazing, cause when we built Woodland, the new Woodland.
The new Woodland, the one now?
We sat there and said, my god, this will be enough room for generations to come.
Yeah, no.
It's full.
Yes, yeah, and it's not, it's it's not stopping anytime soon, so it's, let's let's hope. It does, because I know it's a it's a big uproar and people around around the country are 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 feeling it. And it's it's affecting not only the students and the kids, it's affecting our own, like homeless and veterans that are on the streets and. You know, it's like, eh, we have to have a pri- priority somehow.
Talk to me about MCAS, now, I'm not worried about the numbers. But in general, Milford's published numbers are typically less than communities around it.
So I think it's how you you're you're comparing the uh, what communities you're comparing yourself to as well, cause Milford. If you're looking at Franklin or Hope Hill or like Medway, I don't think they have the same challenges we do in Milford. And I think MCAS doesn't ta- it it takes a whole average of everybody, so you get low scores, high scores. Averages them out, and then actually like your MCAS score, right, that's how that that that's how it works. So from what I gather, the high high scores are can compete with any high scores around. But if you have a whole lot of people who don't speak the language and you're trying to give them a standardized test, they're not gonna do well. You know, and that's gonna bring the whole average down from your higher scores, so I don't. I'm not a huge fan of standardized tests, I I I am when it comes to getting into college, cause I think the S A T, you have to have some way. For colleges to say, hey, you know what, we we gotta take an overall look of of general knowledge that they learned in high school, so we can sort of place them. In uh, in colleges, but for for high school uh, in the MCAS, I think you get a better idea of. What's going on in your schools by talking to your teachers, individual teachers in the classrooms, and they can say, hey, these guys. From where they were, the beginning of the year to where they were in the half a year, you know, do check-ins. They're they're doing really well for for where it was, and I think you get a better idea of the health of the school system. By talking to your your teachers and, you know, potentially a- administrators and things like that, than looking at it at the M MCAS scores. I'm not a huge fan of the MCAS scores.
But how do you feel that the education the kids get in Milford compares to other towns?
Speaking from my experience with my daughter, she's doing great. I have no qualms at all, she, from the time, she gets nervous every year, you know, she's.
She's a kid.
So every year you go in, like, oh, I loved my teacher last year, I loved my teacher last year, every year it was like her favorite teacher. So that tells me that they're doing a great job, and now this year, she loves it, she's doing great, you know, so I hope it continues. You know, despite the the issues and things that Stacy brings, you know, so I'm I'm hoping that once the. The school, the the high school gets going, I had heard that they're thinking about moving the eighth grade potentially up. I think I think that would be good, that would would take a lot of strain off the building itself, and then, you know, the transition from fifth to sixth grade. Without eighth graders being there would probably ha- eh, to me. I wish we still had like East or another place, because you could sort of separate the eighth graders out, keep the sixth and seventh graders together, cause. You know, uh, maturity wise and things there. Exactly, exactly, and they mature so much by the time they're from sixth grade and eighth grade, the things they hear and do, it's like.
Both when you were there and I was there, when you were in Stacy. You're king of the hill at the eighth grade level. And you had to walk across that first day to the high school. It was what, ten yards? But think of the anxiety. That you had.
You heard about freshman Friday? You know, so you're nervous about that, and 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 that's a huge transition going from eighth grade into the high school, so now now it's four years. Where you're where you're building up, and I think they uh, always did a great job, you know, transitioning, but.
School choice is an area that comes up a lot. Um, years ago, we used to make money on school choice. And for those people listening that don't understand. You have the option of placing your child in another community that's accepting kids. But you also can take in kids from other communities that wanna come to Milford. The school committee made a decision to stop incoming school choice, which is costing us about. One point three million a year net. Any thoughts?
I think there uh, hands are tied when it comes to that at at this time being, um. Like I said in the beginning, I thought about school choice and my daughter out, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to run, because I want. I I'd like to, I'd like people outside to look at Milford school system as someplace that they wanna school choice that kid in, you know, not school choice, I'm out. And now I think we're in a situation where we really can't because of uh, over overcrowding and the amount of people that are in the system. So to 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 say, you know, we're able to take people in. It it would really be unfair to all the students that are in the town now, so I think it's the right choice by the school committee, I think they 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 made the right choice in that for sure.
Is Milford a safe school system?
Um, for the most part, it's safe, I know there's, I said, one of the issues uh, is is going into Stacy when it comes to. There there's some, there's some safety issues that I'm concerned about with my daughter going in there, so it's it's different. You know, I have two daughters and and a son, and do you have a, how many kids you have?
Two daughters.
Two daughters, so you're a girl dad, so you know what it's like to be a girl dad, you have different concerns about your daughters than than your. Than your sons, when my son was born, I was like, yes, you know, teach him how to play baseball and soccer and all that, you know, a girl dad, it's, you know, for me. And I'm sure for you, it's it's about nurturing them and protecting them and and wanting them to to be safe and and wanting to be there for them. And uh, I I I have a little tinge of of fear. Going in there because of some of the issues that I've heard there, and so that's why I I want to be able to say, hey. I want the teachers to be able to control their classrooms, you know, I want them to be the authority, the teachers are the authority in the classrooms. Right, so the 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 kids should not be the authority in the class.
You would hope.
You would hope, but I think a lot of what's going on now is they're looking all, you know, they're looking towards the kids that we're we're. We're coddling the kids a little too much for my liking, I'm more old school where, like we talked about. You're in class to learn, so if you wanna mess around. You 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 have to remove them because you're allowing the rest of the kids to suffer, and the teachers need to be looked at. With respect and be the authority figures in the classroom.
Now, we have police resource officers. That are in the schools. We, well, we'll talk about the SWAT program next, but. How do you feel about police in the schools?
I think it's fabulous, I'm a huge supporter of the police, being on the, you know, the police chiefs committee with me, I think the police are an integral part of uh, of our town. And I think the Milford police do a fantastic job in this town, and I think each school, I don't. Every school doesn't have a resource officer, right?
No, not not five.
Yeah, so for me, I'd like every school to have a resource officer. It would be a great thing, because then you're having you have an exposure to the police, maybe some of the kids are intimidated. Or afraid of the police, and I know our resource officers are fantastic, and they build relationships with these kids. And the kids, they're very approachable and they can come up, and the kids, I mean. It it's it's beautiful to see a kid go up and and be friendly with like a a policeman, and watch a policeman interact with a child, whether it's here or in the community. Or 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 wherever, so I I think the police should be in this the in every school.
Now, a few years ago, we were approached by the police department. That they wanted to put in a SWAT program. And it was close to six hundred thousand dollars a year.
Was there a specific reason?
I think the times, people were worried that. What turned my mind was when we were told that we're part of a regional SWAT team. So in the Milford region, we could have SWAT officers on campus within forty minutes. And we asked a silly question, well, how long is the average incident? Eighteen.
Talking about in in the in a school.
In a school, the shootings and. Things on that, and I said, well, wait a minute, if it's over by eighteen minutes. And the police get here within forty.
Sounds like an issue.
Sounds like a disconnect to me. But it's a huge investment. You know, now we have a number of police officers with the latest equipment. Dedicated to being in the schools, knowing the schools, and some people are questioning, is that worth it?
To me, uh, was it specifically to address school shootings, or was it? Also, community safety as well, right?
It was safety around the schools. In the schools, around the schools.
So I think anything you do to make your school safer i- is worth it in the end, you know, just. As an overall maybe insurance policy that you, eh eh, something does come up, to know that. To know that you have access to that, cause not a lot of, you know, places have, have the access to that. So to have that training and that level of expertise and uh, ability to, to deal with that. Hopefully, you'll, you'll never have to use it in a school situation. You know, maybe you do need it where it comes to like a, 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 a drug bust. Or other, other things in the community or something like that, where you can use them in that way. And if you have the school resource officers. Hopefully that will, uh, you know, distract or, 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 you know, people won't think about going in there. For that, for that reason, because hey, you know what, there's a, there's a, there's already policemen in the, in the school. So for me, I, I would say it was, it was worth the outlay.
I remember when they brought it up, I was vice chair at the time, I looked at Chris Moore and it was chair, and I said, God help us. If we say no. And something happens. You know, to me, it's like Mark Nelson, I hope I never use his department, the fire department. But if I need it.
Yeah, you want a well-trained, you want good fire trucks, you want the ladder truck to work, you know, so.
And that wa- that was the whole thing, uh. It's something that you hope you never need. But it's a lot of money, so it's legit that every three, four years. You ask the question. Do you keep doing it? We have a large diversity of families and children in Milford. What do you think, strength or weakness?
I'm not a huge proponent of diversity is a, is a strength. The diversity for diversity's sake isn't really, you know, it's like, okay, so you're, you're, you're diverse. But what, what are you doing with that, that diversity? Diversity in one way brings a lot of good stuff, right? So it brings a more cultural um, knowledge. You get it, if you get exposed to more, more, it's like traveling, right? So if you just know your own, own little enclave and things, and you're not exposed to, to different cultures and. And traditions and things like that, you know, the world is a, is a big, huge, unbelievable place. So the more that you're exposed to different things, the, the better. But when diversity sort of overruns your system. Then, then I think it's a, it's, it, it's a detriment. So with the influx of so many different non-English speakers. We spoke about it before, it causes a problem in the schools. And now, you're starting to spend money. On trying to deal with all of these, and you're taking money away from your, more of your traditional students. So now, I, I, are you hurting more of your traditional students just to sort of get by? With the, the newer, the newer students. So I'm just like, I, I don't really know that it's, it's. In, in my mind, it has its pluses and it has its minuses. When it comes to the school system right now. And how many we have, it, it's more of a minus in, in my thought. I think, I think we're affecting um, the quality of the education. Once again, we ask, is it, how's? Is this gonna improve the quality of education?
Now, overall, is Milford investing enough in its school system?
From what you told me earlier, I would say, uh, yeah, cause you know, it's, there's, there's only so much to go around. You have to split, you, you have to support your fire department, you have to support your police department, you have to, you know, the, the parks department and the highway department. The, the, the town has to have enough money to, to function itself, so all the money can't go to the schools. So, like you said, sixty percent of the town budget is for the schools. That, that sounds like a good amount, you know, and. And when I, i- if, if I'm elected, then maybe I'll think differently, but right now, I'd have to say, yeah.
It's always a hard thing, because you could always spend more.
Of course. Where's it come from?
That's, there's the fundamental problem, that's the profound question.
We need a benefactor, we need like a Jeff Bezos to donate a couple billion or something, right?
That would be nice. Are you familiar with the sped programs in Milford?
Um, not, not intimately, I know that they're uh, they're, they're very, they're. Special education is, is very important. My daughter, uh, got a, um. She went to school for uh, early childhood education, and she got a minor in, in special ed. And it's, for every school, it's important, whether you're looking at the top level. Or, you know, the, the, those students that need uh, that need more help.
But see, it's important that what you just said, special education is not just one group that needs help to the middle. It also includes the top, the next Nobel laureates.
Yeah, you definitely wanna support those, because I mean, it, you're, you're looking at the school, so. Once again, back to quality, the quality of uh, edu- does this help the quality of e- education? I think you really need to support your upper level, because we wanna, we wanna celebrate excellence, right? That's, if, if your top level is, like we talked about, top level comparable to, to anybody in the state. Like, we can throw our top students up there, then you know it's possible that they can do that. And then what you wanna do is look for those students that are in the middle, that maybe th- they're, they're not working hard enough. Or you, 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 you know, we live in a meritocracy, I, I wanna be able to find those kids that are willing to put the hard work in. You know, I, I, I wanna make an analogy, if I may, to um, when I was, when I was younger and, and playing Little League in town. We used to go down to town park, so Little League was ten to twelve at the time. They didn't split the tens out, they didn't have their own twelve-year-old league. Now, like, all the twelve-year-olds, uh, if you wanna play, you play. So you went down to town park and you tried out from ten to twelve, they put everybody in, everybody got a number. All the Little League coaches were there, and then they had a draft, and they picked. And so there were, say, ten, ten teams in town, right? So, and there's eighteen people on a team, so a hundred eighty kids get picked. And maybe there's, you know, two hundred fifty kids that are down there. The kids that didn't make it went and played farm league. The farm league at town was, at that time was nine through twelve. So those kids had a place to play. So now, if they're motivated enough. If they wanna get, you know, in the farm league, you had a T-shirt, in Little League, we had a full uniform. If you wanted to get that full uniform, you didn't make it when you were ten, you worked hard and you made it when you were eleven. So I can, can say that the same thing in school, you wanna find those kids that are like, I wanna, I wanna get to college. In, in, those are like the, the gems that you can form. Some kids just don't want to, you know, they're not gonna work hard, but. We wanna be able to say, hey, if you work hard, this is what you can achieve.
Greg, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Um, for all the reasons we talked about. I bring a new set of uh, ideas, not being on the committee. Um, I believe that my, my passion, my uh, my love for the towns, being, being from the town. Uh, my emphasis on, on education, like I said, I wanna, I wanna be the uh, person that brings the lens, that asks the question. How does this procedure or policy or, or line item improve the quality of the education in uh, in Milford? And I, I wanna be accountable to the people that might have questions and say, well, why does this policy? It doesn't make sense to, for my kid. I, I, I want the school to concentrate on educating our kids. I want the parents to concentrate on parenting their kids, you know? And so I think that's a reason. So I humbly ask that anyone consider me. Now, I'd also like to say that. I'm not running against any of the, the three incumbents, I think the school committee has done a, a good job as it is. But you can always use new blood and, and, and new ideas, there's three seats open, I'm running for one of the, the three seats for the Milford school committee. And I, I hope you consider voting for me, I really do.
Thank you. And as always. There's special people that get up and say, I'm gonna give personal time, because you're raising kids, you're trying to make a living. And yet, we have four people who are saying, I'm willing to carve out extra time to help the kids of the, the town. Please, get to know each of the people and get to know what they stand for and pick three. Out of the four that you can best associate with and live with. So as always, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Thank you for stepping up. Thank you for saying, put me in, coach, I can make a difference.
Absolutely.
Good night, all.